Good morning. Welcome to our January, I mean, sorry, January. Getting way ahead of myself, aren't I? November 24th meeting. And please stand for the pledge.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so this morning, we started off at eight o'clock with two post sessions and have nothing to report, no action taken on either post session. That's the way I got it. And so we're going to move on to public comment. Any item of interest to the public that is within subject matter jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agenda may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. In public comment, if public comment is completed before the thirty minute allotted time period, the board may immediately move to regular agenda. If public comment is not completed during a allotted time period, it will be continued at the conclusion of the consent agenda in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of the comments to be heard. So, do I have public comments, please?
Tom and Fasino Calaveras Planning Coalition. Today, I am delivering to Planning Director Maurer a formal written request for a copy of the general plan produced by Minter Harnish and delivered to the county between December 2010 and February 2011. My past informal requests have been denied. There are three reasons I am confident that you supervisors will direct your staff to grant this formal written request. First, the Constitution of the State of California says, and I quote, "The people have the right to access information concerning the conduct of the people's business." Over $900,000 of taxpayer money was spent on that plan. Since you all took an oath of office to bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the State of California, I am confident that you will direct your staff to follow the Constitution and to release the document so that the people can finally see that for which they paid. Second, I believe that as true patriots, you will stand by the wisdom of our nation's founding fathers regarding liberty and the freedom of information. As Patrick Henry observed, "The liberties of the people never were nor will be secure when the transactions of their rulers may be concealed from them." As Thomas Jefferson rhymed, "If you expect a nation to be ignorant and free, you expect what never was and never can be." The totalitarian governments of the former Soviet Union, Red China, and Nazi Germany are prime examples of this adage. They destroyed books and records in a vain attempt to restrict the fundamental freedom of thought. By contrast, in America, our freedom of information, our freedom of thought, our right to respond by speaking out and voting are among the noblest ways that our American system of government distinguishes itself from the totalitarian regimes of the 20th century. I am confident that you will direct your staff to release the Minter General Plan because you would rather side with our nation's founding fathers than with the international despots of the most despised regimes of the 20th century. Third, in 2006, when I was last forced to admit to the county a formal written request for a public record, the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors had the wisdom to grant that request. I am confident that you will direct your staff to release the Minter General Plan because I believe that this Board of Supervisors is at least as wise as the 2006 Board of Supervisors. Please put this matter on your next agenda and direct your staff to release the Minter General Plan. The people have the right to access information concerning the conduct of the people's business. If anybody in the audience would like to support this request, I have a petition for them to sign. Thank you, God bless, and happy holidays.
Thanks, Tom.
My name is Peter Wright from General Inn. In the same spirit, I would like to have a board to please justify the Sancho cities in this state and give me reason why we have to participate and share our taxes for, like San Francisco, Sacramento, and LA. I know you can get it on the agenda, but I also would like to have a reassurance that your staff does not cooperate, support in any form or manner, plant parenthoods, unconstitutional and illegal activities concerning delivering embryos for private profit. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Okay. Good morning.
Good morning, my name's Bonnie Newman, I'm from Valley Springs. And right on Thanksgiving Day, as a matter of fact, I was able to get up to South Lake Tahoe and check out that asphalt plant that we've heard is, you know, like a prime example of what could be done. And I had the opportunity to interview three people. First, I got lost because they've closed off roads up there, and I stopped and talked to a gentleman who was chopping wood or loading wood or stacking wood. And I asked him about the asphalt plant, because I couldn't find it. And he says, "Well, you just go down this road about a half a mile, you can't miss it." And I said, "Well, how long have you been here and what do you think of it?" And he said, "Well, you don't think too much." His complaints were the noise, the smell, the dirt, and the traffic. I wasn't at the asphalt plant, so I didn't think of taking a picture of the guy, but that's what his complaints were, and he'd been there about, he said, sixteen to eighteen years. Next, I found the asphalt plant, I went down to where it was located, and what I found was, as the gentleman had told me, a big pile of gravel or it looked like shards of rock. And I pulled in and I asked the lady who was walking a dog. I said, "Ma'am, do you live around here?" "Why do you want to know?" "Well, I just wanted to know what you thought of the asphalt plant." "It's a dirty, stinking mess." And then she walked on, she wouldn't let me talk to her anymore. So then I thought, "Well, I'm going to hang out a little longer." And finally, I met that gentleman whose picture you see up there. I don't know if his name was Doug or Russ. You want me to get that? He'd been living there twenty years, and I asked him, and I apologize for these pictures, they don't show up very good.
They're colorful.
Hallucinogenic, but I wasn't on anything, I swear, and I don't think my camera was, but they turned out purple and green and gorgeous, but anyway. Doug or Russ, whatever his name was, told me he'd been there for twenty years. I said, "Does the asphalt plant bother you?" And he said, "Well, when I first moved here, it did." He says, "But then I got in a real bad accident, and I've had a stroke, now I can't see too good or smell too good or hear too good, so it don't bother me too much anymore." When I asked him, "Well, what was the, what happened here?" And he said, "I guess it was back in the 50s or 60s when they built the casinos, they scraped all the land, took all the gravel and threw it against a mountainside, and it'd been there for years. And finally, someone came in and said they would make a business out of it and create a gravel, gravel plant, not a gravel plant, an asphalt plant." And he said, "They only run three months of the year in the summer, and it's during the daylight hours." And he says, "Of course, when the plant shuts down, all the motorcycle people go up and, you know, driving down all of the hills of shards of rock." But he said, "After the asphalt plant was in swing, the residents in the community objected." And if you notice in the first picture, there's a cul-de-sac which used to be a road that went through their community, and they had to block that road off and make the traffic go out the back way to the four-lane highway so that it didn't disturb the residents. He said that the feeling of the people in the community was that it's out on an industry road where there's only storage and diesel repair shops, and it's better over that way, although when a certain time of the year, the wind blows, you can really smell it. Now, the plant was out of production while I was there, but we could still smell the tar. And the biggest thing was the condition of the road in there, it was totally destroyed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bonnie. Any other public comments? Okay, we'll move on to our regular agenda. Admin.
This is just the ongoing resolution continuing the local state of emergency for the health state of emergency. It's the one that we have to renew every two weeks.
Okay. Public comments on that, please? Board comments?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. So I have a motion by Supervisor Ponte, a second by Supervisor Wright, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And the next, resolution continuing the local state of emergency.
Again, this is to continue the local state of emergency related to the Butte Fire. Again, we're required to bring this back to the board for consideration every fourteen days.
Okay, any public comments? Board comments?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
So I have a motion by Supervisor Kearney, a second by Supervisor Wright, all in favor?
Aye.
Good. Five zero. Admin?
Good morning, Mary Rose Richaunga with the Administrative Office. The item before you is an agreement with United Camps Conferences and Retreats UCCR for the purpose of housing our California Conservation Corps that have been working with our Public Works Department in the Burn area. The original agreement that we had signed with Camp Loadstar up in Willsville to house these crews was an amount not to exceed $50,000 until November 15, 2015. It was in the CAO's authority for signing authority. It was then determined prior to November 15 that we would need to extend the crews an additional two weeks, therefore extending the lodging as well, and thus pushing the amount of the lodging over the $50,000 threshold that is in the CAO's authority. So this item is requesting the board to approve the agreement with UCCR for the lodging to house our CCC crews up until November 29, at which time Camp Loadstar will not be available to use for our CCC crews. We are requesting the amount not to exceed $75,000. The monies will come from our Butte Fire Fund, which are partial reimbursement through our FEMA Public Assistance and CDAA funds with the county cost share of the 6.25%.
Okay, any public comments on this? Board comments?
Do we see the crews being extended out past this time?
It has been requested from the Public Works Director that we do extend them out. We are at the, we are trying to locate an additional area for them to lodge, so right now that is our biggest hurdle in trying to find an area for sixty persons to lodge these crews. So we're looking at additional camps throughout the county to lodge them.
So this one, they can't stay there?
Yeah, they've been there a total of four weeks, and they have prior engagements.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I would second.
Are we going to actively look, though, to keep these crews here longer?
Yes, we are in the moment looking at just two-week extensions. We're trying to get a work plan to see how we are best utilizing those crews into the future. It is costing, you know, the total cost right now for those four weeks was $75,000, and so we do are also paying their salaries as well. So we're trying to look at all the cost benefit of housing the crews, paying for the crews, and what that is looking in the long term.
Is this the total cost of having the crews, or just housing?
No, no, sir, it's not. This is just the four weeks for the lodging at Camp Loadstar. In addition to the lodging of Camp Loadstar, we did pay the shower and laundry facility costs for them to be a week at our Mountain Ranch Community Park, and then we are also looking at their salary costs as well.
And all of that, though, is, how much of that is covered under the reimbursement?
Well, we had requested from the Director to have the original two weeks of the CC Creek crews to be, the salaries to be reimbursed fully. However, the additional costs, our total cost share would be the 6.25% of the lodging and the additional cost.
All right. And the Public Works feels that they need the CCC crews, CCC crews, longer?
Yes, I have heard from Mr. Jeff Krovitz that he is requesting an additional two weeks. I am actually in the works with the CCC crews in their Sacramento office to develop some sort of a work plan so we can go forth with any specific work that Mr. Krovitz has for the crews. So we're looking at all of that up at the moment.
Okay, so I have a motion by Supervisor Ponte? Wright, and a second by Supervisor Ponte? All in favor? Opposed? Okay, number six.
Mary Rose Richaunga again with the Administrative Office. The next item we have on the agenda is a letter, the Administrative Office has drafted a address to Senator Berryhill and Assembly Member Bigelow requesting special legislation addressing the financial impacts of the Butte Fire. The county is requesting legislation addressing two specific established state practices. We are requesting the Legislature amend Revenue and Taxation Code 195, 218, 17207, 24347.5. These codes have been amended in previous declared disasters to provide appropriation of state monies to local taxing entities suffering from the loss of property tax revenue. We're anticipating that the total structural damage is over $51 million of property loss, and the county's share of that 1% would be over $539,000. So we are requesting that that the state provide a property tax backfill for three fiscal years, in fiscal year 15, 16, 16, 17, and 17, 18. We anticipate that within those three years of the tax, the backfill of those property tax would likely be less than $2 million. We're also asking that the state amend Government Code Section 8686B, and this section pertains to amending, or excuse me, including Calaveras County in the list of disasters in which the local cost share is waived under the California Disaster Assistance Act, or CDAA. We have brought forth over numerous agenda items to the board stating that the county's cost share under CDAA is the 6.25%. We have estimated, in conjunction with the Auditor's Office, that our total project cost for Butte Fire would be somewhere around $10.7 million. The county's cost share of that would be over $650,000, thus having to dip into our reserves to pay for that cost share. It was an established practice prior to 2006 for the state to waive the local cost share, however, since the recession, that hasn't really been acted upon. So in supporting this letter and approving this letter, we are actually joining Lake County, who last week sent a letter and was approved by their Board of Supervisors, addressing these two specific programs, amending the Revenue and Taxation Codes and also the Government Code waiving the local cost share.
Any public comments?
I have a quick question, and I kind of missed the last one, because I was looking something up. This, the idea of getting state money, right, for this emergency? But as far as giving shelter to these volunteers coming into this county, has anybody looked at what kind of shape the old jail is? Is anything possibly, and what cost would it take to make it a temporary emergency shelter for some of these volunteers? I don't know what the capacity is, but we do have a whole bunch of hemp spaces nearby here, side courtroom and so on, but some of those folks might, temporarily, could use some of this state money to convert it to some temporary shelter for some of these folks.
So that one, you know, I'm going to bring this up in comments afterwards.
Okay.
That this is, this is about, we need to stay on track with the agenda.
Okay. So, but yeah, send a letter to Berryhill and Bigelow, remind them that Calaveras County does exist, give them a map, show them what is this county is. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Board comments?
I have a couple. Mary Rose, where do these dollar amounts come from for us, the $54 million mention? Is that something related to the Assessors' Office, or?
Yes, and I, in drafting this letter, we worked with the Auditor's Office and the Assessors' Office to come up based off of the structures destroyed. So if you noticed in the letter, the $51 million is for destroyed structures with an additional $2.7 million in land loss, but that does not include special assessments, losses to damaged but not destroyed properties, and also it does not include any additional costs we would incur for our debt service on voter prep bond measures. So these were estimates that we're looking at the total, you know, property assessed based on how many properties were just destroyed, that would be the loss.
Okay. And then also, when you talk about what the county projection is for money, is special districts considered in that as well?
Yes, so this, that would be the total 1%, so the 1% that comes back to the overall county-wide special districts and other local taxing entities, so school districts as well.
Okay, all right. That's all I have.
Anybody else? I'd like to thank Rebecca Callen, too, for pushing it so hard. So, do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we accept and proceed with the letter.
Okay, all right, so I have a motion by Supervisor Oliver, and a second by Supervisor Wright, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yeah, thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board announcements?
I have nothing to report today.
I did attend several meetings this past week, one with the Snowshoe Springs Homero Association to discuss their conditions of their roads. As a result of that meeting, I had a meeting a short being this morning with Director Krovitz, and looking at our timeline, we'll be able to at least put that on the list of repairs, although due to the fire recovery efforts, we were not going to be able to get anything effectively done probably for the next year, two years, but we are on the list for work there. I am, I'm sorry, I am meeting with the Forest Meadows Homero Association on a couple of issues. Once again, these are public works issues. They're concerned with only one way in and out of their planned development. There is some discussion about improving a road, county improvements on that road to make another exit out of that development, should there be another catastrophe like a forest fire or something of that nature. Second issue I'm going to be discussing them with is the Verizon Tower that is being applied for now by Verizon. They are, they show some concern on the design, and we're going to be discussing that at that meeting. I will be attending the Friday after Thanksgiving, our Christmas White Pines Parade of Lights, first event, and that just exploded, it's just a great deal. We have over forty-five business sponsors for it, thirty-two floats, the time we've ever done it, and plan on making an event, and it's bringing the communities of White Pines and Arnold back together. There was kind of a separation there indicated by a sign that says, "This is not Arnold, this is White Pines," so maybe we can decorate that sign. And lastly, I do have to apologize, I did make a presentation on Veterans Day at the Murphy's Veterans Memorial, and I opened those ceremonies, and I did fail to mention, after listing the wars and honoring the veterans there, I failed to mention the Korean War, and I have to publicly apologize for that, seeing my stepfather was a veteran of the Korean War, and I'm sure he's going to pay my due respects for that. Thank you.
I attended the VSABA luncheon last week, that was a very good presentation by Kathy Topol from Common Ground regarding seniors and our issues that we have helping and assisting them. Also, had a great meeting with John Lawless from our Mental Health Department, helped us understand a few of the things that we've been voting on lately, and they involve huge expenditures, so I think it's important that going forward, we may bend his ear even more. Last Thursday, met with Steve Hollenbeck from Public Works, and my CSA One Road Committee, two of the members showed up and got a much better understanding of how to look at the facts and the figures that go along with the CSA committees. It's somewhat complicated looking from the outside in, and thanks to Engineer Hollenbeck for helping us out. Going forward, I think we're going to be able to keep the roads up in Rancho Calaveras just a little bit better because of that. On Friday, I attended a Commission on Aging meeting, it was a very good meeting, and afterwards stayed for another half hour to talk to a couple of people that had some good thoughts to share with me. In the near future, the Chair of the Commission on Aging, Phil Sherwood, is going to be here and bring us up to date on some of the and bring us up to date on some of the things that they've observed and dealt with during the Butte Fire that relate to our senior citizens. Each time, I'm, I'm not officially assigned to this group, but I'm kind of a de facto member, and I thank them for letting me sit in with them, because each time's a learning experience. Really appreciate it, and beyond that, everybody have a nice Thanksgiving.
Chris?
Well, I do think that Tom Impasino brought up a good point about the Mencure Plan. We did spend a lot of money on it, and so I'd like to see if you guys want to bring that up at all, to talk about on the agenda. It might be useful to have out in the public, see what's in there. Seems like it's public money, should be a public document, so I wouldn't mind talking about it on the agenda if you guys do.
Well, I, I don't see the, I don't see the advantage of going backwards, so, you know, if it's, if the planning director wishes to share that and somebody requests it, or if, if he, it's requested and it's legally able to share, then that would be up to an individual to do that, so.
I'd like to discuss it, though, as, you know, we are developing a general plan, we did spend a lot of money on it, so I don't feel it's going backwards, I think it's going forward to look at what we've developed and what we're stepping on, and how that compares to the plan that we are developing. And why spend that much money on something if we're never gonna see it?
We spent a lot of money on the past day here, and we're trying not to do that again.
I'd like to hear our county council's opinion.
I don't want to get into a discussion about this. At this point, it would just be polling to see if the board wants to, staff to agendize something for further discussion. But the way I see it at this point is that a Public Records Act request is being made, and that will be forwarded to our office. Our office can review it and respond accordingly.
So we have a procedure to take care of that request?
So my personal opinion is, I'd rather hear the results of that before I do.
I can ask that my office, whenever we respond to the request, that the request be CC'd to the board as well, so the board knows the response.
Sure, and at that point, it needs to be agendized, and we can do it, not. And then I'd just like to say, you know, happy Thanksgiving to everybody. I'm very thankful for, you know, being here and being live and well, and just, you know, thankful, thankful for everything, so hopefully you guys will, everybody out in the audience, will have a, also a good Thanksgiving.
So last week, I, I went to the twelve twenty-six intersection and was there with the engineer, and was looking around, and there is a couple of issues with it that I brought up. One is, there's a, right, right in front of where the flooring store used to be, they put a, an island out there, and, I mean, it looks nice. If you go into that parking lot area, everything is slanted one way, and then there's an arrow sign, a sign with an arrow that, that directs traffic basically into a private alley. We can't do that, that's private property. So, so I asked Public Works to check into that there. I also asked that if we can, you know, make the islands function the way that it functioned before, and have an exit on that one side because of the deliveries and things for the businesses there, it makes it much easier for them to deliver in front of the building, right, you know, especially the mailbox store. And so, so I made a formal request to, to have Public Works check that out. Other than that, the intersection seems to be working fine. I am going to meet with each of the business owners on that intersection area and talk to them about putting together, because I want to put a, put together a committee to, to do, to put together some kind of a plan that would make improvements to what you might consider a historical Valley Springs downtown area. And so as soon as I talk to the business owners and get their input, and if they buy in on it, then I'll be putting out a request to start having meetings on that and see what we can come up with, and, you know, start moving forward with that. Housing and CAL FIRE, or Housing and CCC, we have CAL FIRE here, and I'm not sure how full it is, but that could be a possibility for, for housing the CCC crews as well. So I'd like to check into that.
CAL FIRE has extended fire season until all the stations are ramped up?
Yeah, but I also know that it's not full over here.
Where?
Over here, San Andreas.
Supervisor Edson, my Moss Administrative Office, I want to say that we did check into that early on, and CAL FIRE did not have the room, is what they told us. We can check into that again, but we didn't, we did look into that.
Okay, so in my opinion, if our Public Works Director thinks that we need the crews longer, then we need them longer, because we have some very severe erosion control issues that they've been working on. The Mountain Ranch area is, there's, there's a lot of people out there that are frightened because of the debris flows and the water flows, and if we can at all prevent us being into a reactionary mode because of an emergency, and do a little bit of proactive engagement to try to reduce that, then that's what we need to do, so.
We agree with that. Just so you know, one of the things we were looking at yesterday, I don't know where we are as of, as of the moment, but there are other organized camps in the county. Loadstar is about one, and so there are a couple of other organized camps we can look into as far as housing. Again, it's, it's just availability, so that is something the Administrative Office is working on, to save you that, because that actually really makes the most sense from what we can tell.
Oh, yeah, because it'll make the most dollars when we have to react to it, so we can spend cents now, save dollars. So the cleanup, as of last week, the lot cleanup is, on Thursday, I think they reported over a hundred lots cleared. They have up to thirty crews out there right now, and that's about four hundred people working on it. How many vehicles? They said about two hundred and forty, I think, or two hundred and forty trucks out there, and then plus the pieces of equipment. And I've heard pros and cons from people about the courtesy of the drivers and that sort of thing. Mostly, people think that the trucking, the truck drivers are being very courteous, and, and the crews, and so we certainly appreciate that. They, they're moving about as fast as they can, I know that. They moved their, their, what do you call it? Ra, what's it called? Their base camp, basically. They moved it over here to the, yeah, to the Budweiser Building on Thursday night, and I did not realize myself, as much as I've been involved in this, what a, an effort that goes into coordinating all this stuff. So I, so I walked in there, and I, and pretty much had it all explained to me, and it is, it's unbelievable how coordinated those folks are. They are, they're, in my opinion, they're doing an outstanding job. I, it's, it's like, kind of like a war room, actually. It reminds me of when CAL FIRE was up the fairgrounds, and they had their center there, only more consolidated and more, more detailed, because these people are dealing with individual properties. They're also dealing with right of entry, files on, you know, all these properties, and, and many other multiple issues. And so I, I, my hat's off to them. I understand that they're gonna be taking Thanksgiving off for a few days, and then begin again, I think on Monday, right, Brian? So, so for Thanksgiving, they'll be off until Monday, and then begin again Monday. They're saying about twenty percent of the lots that they've cleared are not coming back clean with the testing. But what they've done is they've, they've found some, they've noticed some same things that would help with that, and there are things that, you know, that we don't think about, like the older buildings with lead paint getting into the foundations and that sort of thing, so they've, they've learned how to deal with that, and they're probably, their percentage of that is probably gonna increase, improve tremendously now that they've identified some of that stuff, so. It's really important to let these folks do their job. December meetings, let's talk about that through January, right?
Currently, with the schedule that we have gone to with weekly meetings, it's, we don't know whether the board wants to continue that through December with all the holidays. However, we are required to renew the local health emergency every fourteen days, which would require meetings on December eighth, December twenty-second, and January fifth. So does the board just want to meet those three days, or is it the board's desire to also meet the fifteenth and the twenty-ninth? And the first, I'm sorry, the first, the fifteenth, and the twenty-ninth?
Can you say the dates you propose again?
Well, at a minimum, the board needs to meet in order to renew the local emergencies on December eighth, December twenty-second, and January fifth. The, the question is, do you also want to continue having the weekly meetings and have them on December first, December fifteenth, and December twenty-ninth as well?
So personally, I like the eighth, twenty-second, and the fifth.
I'll go for that.
I'd go for that. I would not be able to attend the December first meeting, due to the fact I'll be on county business with CSAC.
Anybody else?
No, I'm fine with it.
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Then we always schedule the meetings accordingly, thank you.
Twenty-second and the fifth, right?
Eight twenty-second and, and January fifth.
Okay, great.
Do I have any other comments from staff?
No.
What else? Okay. Many adjournments?